Okay, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone.
It's December.
How's that? December 2nd. What's that read AI?
I think it's because I'm doing transcription.
Okay. December 2nd. I just need a motion for the minutes last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the November 18th, 2024 board meeting.
Don, I just wanted to make a comment because there was some, I said something about trees, but I don't think that's where you meant to put that.
Okay, I'll click on that.
And I also made some grammatical things, changes there.
Of course you can.
In the, in the box, in the folder is, is correct. So I need a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, any opposed? Yeah, I think that's catching the sound from the TV.
No, no sound on the TV. Oh, I think it just couldn't.
Is that microphone? Someone on the stand.
I unplugged it or I turned it off. Turn yours off. Just turn on when you talk.
Okay.
There we go. We'll do one at a time.
We gotta fix this thing. Go ahead.
Okay, warrant number 13, general, fifty nine thousand, thirty three dollars and fourteen cents. Water, two hundred and sixty five thousand, fifty three dollars and seventy three cents. Nothing in sewer, totaling three hundred and twenty four thousand, eighty six dollars and eighty seven cents. Payroll number thirteen, one hundred and eighty two thousand, thirty six dollars and ninety three cents.
So moved.
So moved. All those in favor? I. Any opposed? So the payroll includes.
Not that, it's next one. It'll be the next one.
Okay, the water.
Is the water bill for Troy.
Yes, so that's a hundred and sixty three million, three hundred and thirty thousand gallons.
Turn your mic on.
A hundred and sixty three million, three hundred and thirty thousand gallons for this period. All right, I'm next. We had a presentation last meeting about water worth helping us prepare a budget for the next year. If anyone have a chance, any questions about the proposal?
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
One, I'd like to know whether any other companies that do this. Two, I'd like to see a municipality that is similar to our size that uses this because it seems that every company or city that they do is.
Because they should be, so that ways people can hear it. I'm sorry.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Hear you, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to know, are there other companies that do this? I'd like to see a municipality that is similar in our size. All of the companies, the cities that are on their presentation are five, six, 10, 12, a hundred times the size of us. I'd also like to look at, could we just hire a part-time person to do this versus paying twelve thousand dollars a year for software?
Similar to that. Is there some sort?
Is there some sort of guarantee within the contract that would show us having savings of a thousand dollars of some sort? Because at the end of the day, we're saving, we're trying to save money rather than spend money. So if not be able to find a saving.
Well, part of the problem is that when we've been doing our budgeting over the last few years, it's, there's been no way to project how changes in our revenue impact the future. And so each year is literally trying to figure out what we need to close the gap to pay the bills instead of projecting into the future so that we know where revenues may fall and that property, you know, the property increases, where we have bond payments. There's no tool to do that.
Except.
If you would like to contribute to setting that up, that would, I think that would be great. The, this software is created to do this type of thing. We can look at other, if there's other companies, I, I know for a fact there, there isn't. This is one of their proprietary things that they, that they do. We can go back and look at, you know, the, the different sizes of municipalities that use it. If the board members want to actively contribute in various capacities in producing this budget, I would welcome that. It's, it's, this takes a heavy weight off of, off of some of the things that we need to calculate in order to be able to intelligently put through, not just a budget for this year, but how this budget plays into next year, how we can accurately predict where our reserve levels will be. I, I don't think there's a company in the world that's going to guarantee you a certain amount of savings. But what you're, what you're doing is using the information to accurately project what is knowledge, you know, bond payments, et cetera, into the future. So that element is taken out of it. I mean, you know, the struggle we've had with financial information over the years. This helps organize that and be able to use the data that we do have, you know, more accurately into the future. So we can, we can table this, we can talk about it more. I'll get that information and, and we can discuss it again on the.
The 17th.
Sixteen.
I know it's a team. With our policy, with, with our policy reviews, I gave everybody copies of the accident policy, the Dropbox policy, the best value policy. Anybody have any comments or any changes they want to make?
I made some grammatical corrections.
I'd like to see in the Dropbox policy, like, how long till, like, how the people will be notified that their items were received in the Dropbox, like, how they'll receive, like, a receipt or a phone call letting them know that, like, you know, it was received. Otherwise, I thought the other two were fine.
Can we revise that, put it back in on the agenda for next time?
Like, yeah, we can do that. Do you want to prove, you want to prove the other two?
That's right. I'll most approve the accident and the best value.
I'll second that one.
All those in favor? All right, any opposed?
We, um, there was an error made, not an error. This is a new frontier for this, but the PBA contract, they approved the switch over to the section 384E. In the contract, we approved the funding for it, but we never actually approved the actual going to it. So I need a motion to approve. There's a resolution in there. Someone could read that and approve, so we can approve it. Then I can forward that to the state. It'll be effective as of tomorrow.
Be it resolved, the village of Manans, board of trustees does hereby elect to provide the pension benefit of section 384 dash E B of the retirement and social security law for any member of its police department covered by section 384 slash D and 34 dash E of the retirement and social security law as presently or hereafter amended. Be it further resolved, the effective date of such shall be the third day of December, 2024. And I move to enter this resolution to be approved.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, any opposed? I'll sign.
Actually, I have to sign if you can.
Go for it. Okay. I, we're going to start putting the mayor's report stuff in the, in the, in the minutes of it so that everybody doesn't have to write so much. The activities, we've talked with the mail works to see about making the activities a little different going forward, including some color and some pictures and using a format that is a little more dynamic. They have been willing to donate their services. All the village needs to pay for is the postage. The, Donna and I met with them and the, the names and, and addresses can be laser, laser printed instead of having to put labels on and envelopes and stuff, fold, et cetera. So we're still working on a mock-up. In the beginning of 2025, we're going to make the switch. When we have everything organized and we can look at a.
I was gonna say, we're looking for a starting point. The school does like a, it used to be called Pop Prince. I don't know if that's what it's still called. It's like a newsletter. It's like three or four pages that comes out with photos.
So they're going to work up a mock-up and then we can, we can send it around and talk about how it looks. And then when we're ready, you know, basically the idea is to have it come out the end of, the end of the month so that it's for the next month. It has a, a great calendar that will have everything on it, trash days, special pickup days, et cetera, holidays. It'll, it'll be something that they can keep, put on. It's, some of the ideas we've had so far have been pretty good. So we're going to work up a mock-up and like I said, they're willing to donate all of the labor except for the postage. And even on that front, they get a discount because they get.
Because of the way they, they mail it, they get a bigger discount in postage than we do. But the other thing too about it too is like with the calendar, it's going to be a separate sheet of paper so that you can put it up on, like to put it right up on it as refrigerators so everybody can see it. But the other thing too is that we're going to get with, already we get stuff from like the Albany Rural, St. Agnes, you know, the main society and stuff like that, but we can do that. You know, we do everything. I'm going to work with Jen to add school stuff that's on there too. So everything will be in there. The only thing that they ask, we're going to put a little note on the bottom that says services provided by Mailworks. So they get a little bit of advertising. But there's, it's similar to what Albany County or Town of Colony seniors use. There, there, that's what we're mimicking. And the good part is it's going to be, won't be glossy paper, but it'll be papier. But it'll have pictures and it'll also have it so that, I think it's going to be, we're going to put it on the website too. So that'll be actual, they can look at it and stuff. You know, we do that now, but some of the things are in there for months at a time. We're not, we're going to eliminate the stuff that's going to be, going to be one month in time. Unless it's something that needs to be.
All right, so we'll get a mock-up to everybody that says, Mailworks gets us an initial, initial.
Will, will we be, who will compile? Will she will?
She'll continue to do the, the content. And basically the idea is to set it up in a format that different groups will have different sections dedicated that they can then plug their information for the month into. So the format will try to stay the same. And then it's just what we, what we put into it, like hoping that there is a section like the, the month and pictures from the, you know, previous month. There'll be pictures from, you know, the kids at the holiday or the, the holiday train. And then the month before that, it was at the, you know, the, the home retreat or, like, you know, just to, just to show some pictures of, of people, you know, constant in the park, the food truck, something. So, so the sections remain the same, but the content in them changes. And then the calendar, I think, is the piece. On the backside of the calendar, we talked about having important phone numbers so that it's quick reference. If anybody needs something, they can tell them to call or, you know.
And one thing we want to get back to doing that we did years ago is we're going to highlight a business or a person within the village every month. So that, you know, like, like Mailworks, we, for example, we would say, you know, Mailworks came in 2024. They brought a hundred jobs in there, you know, you know, and tell them exactly what they do, you know, do like, when, when Alfaro came in, we did a big article about that. So it'll be different businesses each month.
More people or employees.
I was going to say, can we do like a, a meet the staff monthly? Like, I feel like there are so many police officers.
The idea is to, is to bring something different. Yeah, like, is to, uh, a person spot.
Yes.
You know, doesn't have to be, you know.
Community, that's really, exactly, yes.
And one of the other things we talked to, David's going to be working on this, we're going to put like statistics for the fire departments, some statistics for the police department, how many fire calls they went out, what type of calls and stuff they did, just so, and maybe they can highlight the firefighter, the, the monster, something.
And then the, the newsletter information is hopefully going to translate to the webpage and to Facebook so that.
Now, can we do before this new one comes out, an opportunity for people to opt back in? Because like it wasn't the activities originally, like an opt-in, opt-out.
Yes. So the, their database, all we have to do is send them the changes and they will maintain the database. And, and so, yes, you can either opt in or opt out. You can get it electronically in a PDF format. And then the same thing can go dynamically on the website. And.
The only problem, you know, originally we talked about mailing it out to everybody, but the problem is, is there's a lot of, not vacant, but it's like we even do the apartments, it's something like the apartment that we gave, paid for that mail and it comes back to us. We did that, we probably got, I don't know how many we got back, but we did a mass mailing the other day and we got a bunch of things back.
So maybe once we determine when the first issue is actually going to go, Jay, we can do like a social media post, like, don't get the activities, new version coming out, you know, call the office to get back on or something like that.
Or we can, we can do something, we'll work with Jay, we'll get something where we can do it.
The Google form.
The Google form. A mail PDF or a mail format.
Because I think more people might opt back in for something like that versus the block and white.
And the fact that it's not, we please some people get annoyed by too much mail.
Yeah. All right, Hopkins Car Wash adopted Van Ensler Boulevard. It took almost a year for them to get the sign up and officially become the adopter of Van Ensler, but they are officially on the sign. We've been working with the Town of Colony and Colony Water for the last few months about revising our municipal sewer contracts. We're working with them on, on some suggestions that they have. Confident we can come to some sort of an agreement for this year. That the boards can approve. We've been talking about the village court starting to accept online payments. They're hoping to have that ready and operating by January of this, of this coming year. As is advertising that business review, the village one apartment sold for thirty and a half million dollars. We're working with the new owners to get the water meters replaced, which is a four-year project that hopefully will finally get accomplished. I'm working on a, finally submitting a local law for vacant building registry. Craig Mann is going to help me with some language to go in that. That's kind of been out there bouncing around without a formal submission. I'm hoping to get that submitted in January. And then coming up also, I want to revise our peddler's permit law, which became an issue with Verizon walking around. We realized that the law is there, but the fines and the fees that are associated with it are a little bit outdated. And then the next thing is the village sign law.
I have a question. Does that apply with real estate agents?
Going door to door?
I had one show up to my house yesterday because he's selling twenty four tilling houses. And he wanted to know if I knew anybody that wanted to buy it before he put it on the market and/or if I was interested in selling my home.
I think that would apply.
That would apply. He's not supposed to do that.
So.
Nobody spoke?
No, no one is supposed to, yeah.
I was not sure with the real estate agent.
And the, the permit says on it, keep with you at all times. And they're required to display it at house. So.
If someone comes to our door, we should add.
Absolutely. Do you have a peddler's permit? If they don't have a peddler's permit, they're operating illegally.
Which is what happened with the National Good Guys that night that they, I ended up calling for Dave, right? They were told they had that permit. They were, they were actually National Good Guys, but unfortunately.
There's only, there's two people that don't have to get those, religious people and there's one. The state has this energy thing that state, it's a state approved thing that they don't need to build pedal, pedal, pedals.
I think that's, is that.
I think there's initials.
Nyberg, yeah. Interest, public interest.
Ten years since they've come to my door. I remember them.
I hit my mom all the time.
They target.
Okay, we did an energy audit as part of our climate smart initiative on this building. And the report is in the board folder and I'll publish it online if it isn't already. Some of the improvements were obviously insulation related. One of those improvements is, is working some insulation into our new roof, which obviously we need. So we're working with Skyway Roofing to, to work up a quote. The first quote came in at fifty thousand plus dollars. And then we figured out that we didn't need to replace the roof. We can repair it and that's what we're going to do. So it's going to be much more economical to do that.
Just to, just to advise you, we may have to do, because we've had, it's a leak over my head. We may have to do an emergency purchase and then we'll approve it next board meeting, but we're, they were supposed to get the quote to us before the meeting tonight. So, but there's also a leak down in the stairwell on the police side going up to the court. So we got to get these done now. So next board meeting, we're going to have the work done, then we'll do, do the approval afterward.
And then the suggestion was to go on a maintenance plan for them to come and check out the roof every year, six months or whatever. And, and try and chase these leaks down and, and repair anything that looks suspect. So. Okay, the cleaning contract that we had signed for this building is going to start this month, please?
Yeah, it was supposed to qualify as we had to schedule.
The pruning of the Brookside trees will happen any day now. I'm just going to remind them tomorrow. Water bills will be going out at the end of December for due date of January 31. And Lee Kinlan was elected the new Albany County District Attorney and he hopes for a strengthened relationship with our police department. Ryan's going to talk with him about some common goals and funding partnerships that they can work on during the years. So that's. Awesome. Anything else, Don? Trustee reports.
The only thing I'd ask is the guardrail at edge at six, that can be fixed.
It's the O T. We, you know, they know about it. They're the ones that.
Phones have been there for a few months, just.
Craig, Craig from Region One is back tomorrow from.
I want to say I really enjoyed the holiday train. I thought it was very well organized. Our village, the police, fire, DPW, everybody chipped in, Don, of course. Brian, everybody chipped in to make it a great event. So thank you to, to all who did that. So nice start.
Don, you want to tell us how much food and stuff?
We, we probably, probably four thousand pounds of food because it was the tractor, it was, you know, there's a trailer that we use to store the ATV in, was filled up to the roof in there. And we also, it was sixteen hundred and twenty-five dollars donated.
In cash?
In cash.
Not including the check.
Yeah, it's not included. It's the three thousand dollar check that they got.
That's amazing.
I just want to confirm where that went.
The Sacred Heart Food pantry and sister retired.
I know. I meant to tell you that. Sorry.
Thanks. I'm down here looking.
She finally retired. I will say I had quite a few people show up to my house looking for the truck to put the food in.
They booted, I don't know why they, well.
They were a little far. There was a couple complaints. So we'll just have to next.
I told them where to put it, but no one listens to me and all that.
It was too late by the time I realized.
So I thought that was a great start to the holiday season. I'm looking forward to the, the tree lighting. It's like good but cold weather for, for the day and that's. Yep, it's still, still organizing that. Again, that's December 26th. So after your Christmas celebrations, get excited, no downtime. You've got Hanukkah starting just as Christmas is winding down. So it should be exciting. Again, it's going to be held right here. We are still coordinating with the rabbi to get that, that going. It should be, should have a good food, latkes, other donuts, other Hanukkah foods, Hanukkah gel, the chocolate coins. And yeah, it's going to be wonderful. So be there. You don't have to be a kid or you can be a big kid. That's what I plan to do. So everyone should look forward to that. And I'll have a more solid update at the next meeting as plans get finalized.
Thanks, Seth.
My pleasure.
The Manans School spaghetti dinner is next Thursday from four to seven. It's thirty dollars for a meal, which feeds a family of four. And they are suggesting pre-order limited. So there is a QR code. It's been going around on Facebook.
It's next, not this Thursday, following Thursday?
Next Thursday, the 12th. No, this Thursday is senior holiday.
Yeah.
I have it.
I have three things on it.
Rushing from one to the next. Yes.
Amazing, because I already talked about it all.
No camera system.
Oh. Oh. There's a new camera system that we improved. It's all in work, up and working. I can see everybody's coming in before they come to can hide.
And fire alarm.
And, and the fire alarm system at 250 is fully operational now. It's all co-compliant. And we're going to, within the next couple of weeks, 280 and the records rooms, fire alarm systems are going to be inspected. We're doing a bird roll. Yeah, get out. That's all I got.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else?
Need to make things to, to.
Call it kind, Bill. All right, couple things. While picking up litter at the baseball section at the Smith Clark, I found a door to the men's room was unlocked. Why was unlocked? I don't know. So I locked the men's room door and I also checked the women's room, restroom door. It was locked. And I, so I report the problem to the Manans Police. Now, just before 2:30 in the morning of October 24th, 2024, I heard one freight train along the railway track between Manan Road and Brookside Avenue, railway crossing area blew its whistle a couple of times. I already reported this incident to the Manans Police and Clerk Donna Hannigan. Now, according to the agreement, freight trains are not supposed to blow their whistles between 10 o'clock at night until seven o'clock in the morning, unless it's some emergency. Right? Now, I'm delighted to see that one fire heightened on 21 Clifford Road property was finally been cleared to brush weeds and flowers. Plus, I like to thank our public works guys for getting the job done. One thing I hate is that anything that's blocked with fire height. Now, I'm still hearing complaints from some residents of Clifford Road neighborhood, neighbor, section that this village street is still remains in poor condition. And plus Clifford Road barely needs repairs. Plus, the street is being flooded with litter, which I'm not too happy about. I try to keep that street clean, but I just hate people when they throw litter. Now, since Manans Farmers Market region has several things going on each Saturday between late April and into early November of every year, I do support most events at Manans Farmers Markets every Saturday. into early November of every year, I do support most events at Menance Farmers Markets every Saturday. One thing I don't like is having live music because the music is too loud, it's tough to hear. Do business or it's tough to hear when you're dealing with people. I wish you did, did not have live music. Now, during early August of twenty-two thousand twenty-four, I received a letter from the Fisheries and Oceans Minister, Canada, dealing my proposal for seacoast fish farms in the Atlantic, Pacific, Antarctic coast of Canada. You all got copies of it, of the letter, I hope you appreciate it. I did ask the minister to introduce my proposals in the House of Parliament, lower house of parliament, so I hope they do it. Alright, thank you for letting me speak on village, important village issues. I hope you all had a good Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. I have one more thing I forgot. Just a reminder to everybody, uh, we pick up back in the end, it's December thirteenth. After that, it's gonna be big, and then we're gonna suspend it for January, February. And then except for the Christmas trees, and that'll be it.
Uh, and Farmers Market is having a holiday extravaganza, I think it's on. Craft area, like, uh.
Next Saturday?
Fourteen, fourteen. Music and Santa and, uh, crafts and gifts and sweets and stuff like that, so. Sorry, detoured.
Next Saturday.
Yeah, question, on the water worth, uh, consulting, also, is that software for modeling for water and sewer only?
No.
So you can use it for anything?
Correct, so, so general fund, water, sewer, all three modules will include it.
Something as I asked you is, if you look on their website, it specifically talks about water and sewer products that they've done.
So the program was initially invented to help with water systems. But the modeling can be used for, uh, anything. So, uh, a lot of municipalities use it for trying to evaluate, uh, like solid waste costs, uh, trash fees and that kind of thing. And, and so it, 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 it kind of expanded, the tool can be used for multiple things, so, yep.
Hey, Jeff, can we put something on Facebook about police pickup ending, in which they ask me back?
After the thirteen.
I'd like to send out an Edward Bridge just to.
Yeah.
Sure, cause now the day, uh, Monday.
See, Bill will be full of, of that.
Anyone else? Anything for executive? We have one matter for executive session.
Fine.
Uh, personnel matter.
I move, I move, I move that we enter executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
I'll second.
All is okay, alright, and it goes. Thank you, everyone. This'll be, this'll be.
Don, I forgot.
I look at the picture.
Yes, because I have to go to the dance.
See ya.
Have a good day.
Have a good night.
Who, um.
The Albany County Dance Program.
Who, um, went into executive session?
I, I'm, I made the motion.
I second that.
Mike McCain must be an intern next year.
I'll, I'll move that, I'll, I'll, I'll move on your appointment as the intern, what, to be the intern.
I would be.
Yes.
I have my assistant already.
Oh, perfect.
Bye, everyone. Steve, you're gonna stay, Steve will stay.